Nine, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One. This getting into this says a lot about how much technique you have. If you can't be articulate in this, then dancing is gonna be hard. You know what I'm talking about? It's getting from one position to the other. Same thing, contracting. I don't want to get the butt out. You hover it over. Believe it or not, this is a transition that shows your technique, cuz your heel, your heel, your heel. So I'm promenading almost as if there's no, um, effort. And then you should just float and float and float. And that same lift is the same lift that's gonna support you and your big leg. You all have a big leg part. But from, um, then the, at the end, this lift is the thing that kinda gets the audience memory, and they go, "Ah." You've done all that work, but the lift into the passe is the most thing, is the thing that touches them the most. Take this transition. Take your time, take your time. Full position. Hey, one, two, three, four. You float, you float. Much better. Arm and leg. One, two, beautiful, three. Now catch me with the lift. Better, yes. Left leg, one, beautiful, three.
There's something that I would like to suggest for you young people, and even watching you move and dance and how you interact in this, in this kinda environment. You guys have to understand the importance of exposure. That means getting out, finding out what else is out there, um, going to see different dance companies that are, that come through Cincinnati. Of course, we gotta enter that and shoot YouTube and find out what you like, what you don't like, what, what, what you're passionate about. And then there's something that I learned from Sam Roberts. He, uh, I say it every time I'm in front of young people. He said that you have to love hard work. If you don't love to work hard, it's the wrong career for you. Because once you leave this sheltered environment, there will be so many challenges that you face wherever you, especially from your professional or your dance. That when you come in front of a panel, come in front of a panel of judges or artistic directors, why are they gonna look at you? Why are they gonna look at Juliana and say, "I like her"? So those are the things that you should be investigating right now, and you get it from your teachers. They're giving you this input, they're giving you this information, and what you do with it determines how far you're gonna go when you leave this environment. That's my two cents. As dancers, learn about money. Learn about how you do your contracts, how to negotiate your own contracts. Learn about putting money aside and saving money. Learn about health benefits and make sure the company that you're doing has them for you and your family members. I regret not learning about money earlier. I'm learning now, but I, it's because I had to. But make sure you learn about the business side of show business.
Hello, my name is Danny Bell, and this is my great friend.
Oh, from the room? No, that would be hilarious.
Look at that thing. It was in my script.
I call to order the April thirteenth regular meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request that everyone in the audience and at this roundtable, please silence your cellphones and other electronic devices. And at this time, would you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
I am present.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Mr. Manera?
Here.
Mr. Nelms?
Here.
President Kins?
Here.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, March twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, and a regular meeting, March twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. Thank you, Mr. Manera. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dansby. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Mrs. Hoffman, as Chair of the Policy Committee, please present the March twenty-third, two thousand fifteen committee meeting report.
Sure, I submit the report as written with both one change. Uh, Board Member Bates is still listed on the Policy Committee as a member. I think we just know she started that committee, and she's our policy guru. However, she is not on the committee anymore. Um, and so we just need to make that amendment to the Policy Committee notes.
Just put emeritus next to my name.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for that, uh, friendly amendment. Mrs. Copeland-Dansby, as Chair of the Partnership and Public Engagement Committee, will you please present the March twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen committee meeting report?
Certainly, I present it as written. Uh, there are a couple highlights, though, that I would like to point out. Um, I would like for the community to be aware that our Summer Stars two thousand fifteen program, um, will be launched June second and run through June the twenty-sixth from eight until twelve. Um, also, there are twenty community learning centers that will be offering expanded days, um, in June, um, and three magnet schools, which are, uh, Academy of World Languages, Rosemont Condon, and Silverton Pidea are piloting a summer passport program this summer. Um, also, as follow-up and as conclusion, I think, to the Summer Youth to Work Program with the City of Cincinnati in partnership with the Urban League of Greater Cincinnati. Our district, um, was a great partner this year. The last we counted, there were a hundred and ninety applications in February, one thousand one hundred and fifty applications in, uh, March. And, um, it was the work of our, uh, FACE unit that really helped to move that process along for our students, um, hoping that they'll be employed this summer. And, um, finally, um, there were a couple, um, assignments, and I think we'll just update those in, in the assignments. Thank you.
Thank you. We need a voice vote to accept the committee reports as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Fantastic. Onto our new business. Tonight's presentation will be on our School for Creative and Performing Arts. And here to present, we have the Principal and Artistic Director, Mr. Steve Brokamp and Mr. Isadora Rudnick. So invite you to come to the podium at this time. Good evening.
And thank you so much for accepting our request to come and speak with you this evening. Um, on behalf of the parents and the students and the staff that are here, uh, and all of the people involved in our school, I just, I, I'm very grateful, uh, to be able to present. Our year has been a year of, a lot of, uh, study. Uh, we, we formed an Oversight Committee. Uh, we also had our Art School Network study. We had our DeVos study. And we just last week went through the accreditation process. I wanted to share a little bit of that information with you, particularly the accreditation report. But before we do that, we'd like to show a little video that was created by the students, for the students. Um, many of them, some of them are here today who performed in the, uh, video. Some of them couldn't make it, but we wanted them to tell you a little bit about how they feel about their school. Like to put them first and foremost in our presentation and start with that video.
Hello, my name is Danny Bell, and this is my great friend, Raquel Brewster, and we're both here seniors at the School for Creative and Performing Arts. My major is drama.
My major is creative writing, and we're gonna tell you a little bit about our school.
That's right. As people may know, SCPA is a phenomenal place for young artists coming up in the world.
Yes, it is.
It is. And most, people may not know that SCPA is also a brilliant school for, in the academic area and extracurricular activities. So we'd like to get a few thoughts from our other friends here inside. So come on.
Let's take a walk.
Hi, my name's Cameron Baker. I'm a senior here at SCPA, and my major is drama. And, uh, even though I've been involved in the arts mostly since I've been here in fifth grade, uh, I've done a lot of academic work as well. Um, I've taken five AP classes by the time I graduate. And something that's really important about those classes is what comes after when you take the test. And it's kind of a cool culminative experience that we all work towards together, uh, especially in classes like AP Chemistry and AP Calculus, where it's really a team effort to make sure that we all understand exactly what we're trying to learn. And we put our best foot forward and, you know, try to help everyone and make sure that the teacher is helping us to the best of their, um, their ability.
Hi, my name is Kyrie Harris, and I am a vocal major at School of Creative and Performing Arts. I think vocal at Performing Arts has helped me with my singing outside of school with my band that I have. And it, it really helps me, like, a lot. It's, it's fun, it's excellent, teaches you a lot of things that I didn't know, and it's pretty good.
Hi, my name is Elga Paris Morales, and I'm in the ninth grade, and I'm a dance major here at SCPA. And, um, I just love how here it's, they like to be very flexible with our schedules because they understand that we have such busy days going to rehearsals. For example, sometimes I'm here from eight in the morning until six PM with all the rehearsals. And the teachers are very understanding with that. For example, whenever we have our performance weeks, they let us have extra time to, um, do our homework. And recently, here they give us lots of opportunities to do things. And recently, we were able to go to Italy, the dance ensemble, and we got to perform in Milan, and we did, um, our Fall Rep Series, and it was just so much fun. And we got back, and we got back straight to homework, and everything was just right in order. So you don't feel so pressured. It's, it's really not as bad as you would think.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Cheveria. Um, I'm a freshman at SCPA. I'm a visual arts major, but last year I had the chance to participate in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. I got fourth place in regionals, and, and it was a really cool experience for me because, well, we do a lot of the arts here, but getting to do something academically was really interesting. And I've always kind of had a knack for spelling.
Hi, my name is Drew Turnbull. I'm in the eleventh grade here at SCPA. And SCPA is a fantastic school. It has everything, every art that you could imagine. And the art side of it is great. It's an awesome experience for anyone that comes here. But what people don't know is what happens outside of the arts. And there's other things, like, I'm into AP classes, AP Chemistry and AP Literature and Composition, both are fantastic classes, awesome teachers that I, uh, look up to. And I'm also part of the varsity basketball team here, which is a great program. And when you hear basketball at a creative arts school, you're thinking, "What? That doesn't even make sense." And we used to have soccer, but not anymore. But the basketball team is actually very good. We've had multiple scholarships for, uh, players that used to be here. Two players I can think of just last year are Quincy Tillinghast, who got a D1 full, did he get full ride? Full ride scholarship to, uh, Delaware State, which is, that's D1, that's awesome. And then also Michael Buck, who was on the basketball team last year, got a scholarship to go play at UC Claremont. So there's, there's a lot of opportunities outside of just the arts.
Hi, I'm Anduile Hassan. Um, I'm in the eleventh grade, and my major is Vocal Music. Um, one of the groups that I work with is Baby Grants. It's a young, a group full of young women, um, an acapella group. We often travel together, and we do many competitions. With us doing this, it, um, gives us a great boost of confidence, and it helps us build companionship with one another. It gives us, um, such dignity that you can't find anywhere else, and it's amazing. It just, you build, we build a community together, and we just help each other, we looking for each other, and just alone, and then doing what we love to do all the time just makes it a hundred percent better.
My name is Mariah Reynolds. I'm in the ninth grade, and my majors are Drama and Vocal. And I have two nonprofit organizations. Uh, one is called Just One Heart, and I make Valentines and thank you cards, and I send them to soldiers and veterans with the help of some friends and some family. And I also have Glove One Another, where I collect cold weather accessories and school supplies, and I send them to homeless shelters and disaster victims. And throughout the years, the school's really helped me. They've, um, really been by my side and empowering me to continue down this road of community service. And it's been a great road. I've gotten some community service awards. Uh, one of them was the Prudential. I got that, I got silver. And it's been really great going to this school. Everyone's so friendly, and I have a great day every day.
My name is Enora Martin. I'm in fourth grade, and my majors are Art and Vocal. Today I'll be talking to you about my experience in Brimble. So first, we had the audi, we had the audition, and I made the team, which is, which I was really happy about. And then we had another tryout where we used buzzers this time. So we would, um, if we knew the answer, we would buzz in, which is pressing a button on the buzzer. If we got it right, Miss Singh would say correct, and if we didn't get it right, she would say incorrect, and the other team get a chance to answer the question. And when you answer the questions, you only get ten seconds to answer them. And if it's like the last minute, well, the last second, and you, and you know the answer, you can either guess or say the right answer, and you'll still get it correct. And also, we have matches against other schools where, um, we would compete against another school. Usually we win, one time we lost them, but that's okay because at least we did our best. And also, we had a tournament where we, uh, where we challenged all the other schools that we challenged. And we won, and we won second place. Good thing that we tried hard, we an, we answered most of the questions right, and most of all, we did a good job.
Hi, my name is Ian Ferguson. Um, I am a senior at SCPA, and I, uh, go for Scenic Technical Theater. I hope after here, I go into architecture, and I have designed many shows. I have drafted, um, gone through the design process, and it's gonna really help me. SCPA has brought so many opportunities to me, including working with the Cincinnati Opera, um, all different types of professionals. And on top of that, the academics, I, uh, I'm in AP Calculus and AP English, which of course correlates over to, uh, architecture. So SCPA's really helped me, and it's a great school.
Hello, my name is Kanaye Jackson. I am a senior at SCPA. And other than Technical Theater, which is my major, I am a ma, I am a member of the Sisters of SCPA. Uh, we do or, um, organizations. We, um, work with students outside of the school and with the school. And I am also a basketball player for the, uh, girls varsity team here.
Hello, my name is Sierra Ferguson, and I am a senior at the School for Creative and Performing Arts. I am in the major of Creative Writing. And I also am the president of the Unified Free Uganda Program at the school, where we sponsor two male destitute children from Gulu, Uganda. It is three hundred dollars a year for each student, and that puts them through school for the entire year. It pays for a room and board and their education. And this is something that does take a lot of teamwork, um, just because I am unable by myself to obviously raise, raise six hundred dollars. But with the help of the team that I have behind me, we do things like bake sales, and we sell candy grams, and we do, um, school dances for the little kids, and it's a lot of fun. And we actually get notes from the children in Uganda, and we send them letters. And we also get the opportunity to be chosen to go to Uganda and meet these children. And it's really been something that means a lot to me because I know that I am not donating to a cause that I don't know where the money goes. I am giving this money specifically to these children, and they appreciate it so much, and I get to see how it directly affects their lives. And that has made a huge different, difference in my life as well.
My name is Data Pullman.
My name is Nyla O'Neil.
I'm Lucy Mullin.
My name is Ava Kane.
My name is Yvonne. I like art because you get to be creative.
I like art because there is no right or wrong answer. You can do whatever you want.
Uh, my favorite kind of art is abstract because you get to do it every you want, and there's no, there's not like a specific way that you have to do it.
I like art because, like, you can make art out of anything that you think you can do with it.
I like art because the, everything in the world is art.
We are SCPA!
Yeah, of course, the hard thing about leading off with the kids is I have to follow them. So I'll try to be as entertaining. I'm gonna share, uh, some information with you that, um, many of the board members, probably all the board members, have seen, but some of our, um, staff and parents have not seen. I'm gonna lead off with that. This was developed, and I have a lot of gratitude towards, uh, Dr. Lofton for, uh, compiling some of this data and sharing this with the board members. Uh, so I wanna thank him for that. Um, following a few summary slides that I think the board members have seen, I'm gonna share some highlights from our, uh, Arts School, it's not our Arts School Network, our, um, accreditation process, uh, through Advanced Ed. Uh, and we will show a few slides that highlight that, but not the full report, and we have some good news to share with you about that. So, um, the School for Creative and Performing Arts, this is an analysis, analysis of the academic performance data for grades seven through twelve. It was conducted to ascertain the academic performance of this school as compared to other high schools in the Cincinnati Public School District. It also, and I'm gonna go off track here just for a second, it also highlights some information from four other arts high schools in Ohio, and those will be highlighted in here as well. In reviewing the data for the past three years, SCPA has consistently been one of the highest performing high schools in the district. Only Walnut Hills High School scores better on every category in each year of the data reviewed. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, this is the three-year graduation trend, and I'm, I'm gonna try to use the, uh, pointer here. School for Creative and Performing Arts High School is listed as second. As you can see, uh, the good news for the entire district is that the graduation rates are increasing across the board, uh, for the last three years, for the most part. Uh, the green line representing two years ago, the red line representing a year before that, and then the blue line representing, uh, last year. And we had a fairly significant jump in last year's graduation rate, and the trend continues. So hopefully, we'll be up to a hundred percent very soon. You can see, we're right on the heels of the, uh, district leader there. The next, uh, slide is a summary of the three-year performance index, um, which rates the academic achievement on certain assessments, um, that the school, uh, goes through. Uh, academic, uh, in grades three through eight and our OGT scores. You can see that, um, SCPA has remained high. We had a, a little bit of an uptick last year from the two previous years. Most of the schools, uh, went down just a little bit. We went up a little bit, uh, and we are right around, uh, first or second place there in the district. The third, the next slide is the indicators, uh, that have been met. Um, those are on the state report card. We've remained relatively stable in that area and currently lie fourth in the district in that, in that area. Those are the indicators from the, uh, state report card. Next slide. Okay, now, we're getting into a little bit of data from, um, other schools that are art schools in Ohio, the Cleveland School of the Arts High School, Firestone High School, Fort Hays Arts Academic High School, and Stiver School for the Arts. As you can see, on the graduation rate, uh, which, by the way, this is the only category that SCPA was not number one, uh, the graduation rate, we were second of all art schools in Ohio. On the performance index scores, we were, uh, atop all of the schools that were compared. These are schools that are similar to SCPA in the state of Ohio. Again, the same schools, uh, SCPA was first. The percent of indicators met, we had a sizable, uh, commanding lead, and, uh, we were in first place in that area. Uh, again, these, these are the indicators that are mentioned in the state report card. At this point, I'm gonna kind of turn our attention to, uh, the external review from Advanced Ed. Uh, this is something that the board members, I don't think have seen. Uh, the staff has seen this. We, this was shared with us. This is a preliminary summary and a recommendation by, uh, the external review team from Advanced Ed. Um, and basically what this is, uh, for those of you who aren't completely familiar with an accreditation process, um, an accreditation is basically a validation of, uh, quality. And, um, it is a panel, a panel was put together, a panel of our peers. In some cases, we had, um, assistant principals from our own school district. We had, um, a dean from CCM. We had, uh, a principal from another district. It was led by a gentleman named Bill Kern, and the group that, uh, was evaluating us was Advanced Ed. Advanced Ed is a global leader in providing continuous improvement and accreditation services to over thirty-two thousand institutions serving twenty million students worldwide. Uh, some of the things that they were looking at were teaching and learning impact. The team examines student performance results, instructional quality, learning and family engagement, support services for student learning, curriculum quality and efficacy, and college and career readiness. Some of the findings included that the school's curriculum provides equitable and challenging learning experiences that ensure all students have sufficient opportunities to develop, to develop thinking, learning, and life skills that lead to the next level. Grading and reporting is defined using rubrics and communicated to students, parents, and stakeholders. Now, I wanna just give a little bit of information about their process. They came in with a fairly large panel of people, and they visited every classroom. They observed every classroom. They spoke with virtually every staff member or a representation from each, uh, department. They spoke with many of the students, and we had students as their guides throughout the day, for the two days that they were there. So they got a very, very good glimpse of what we do academically and artistically. We'll go to the next slide. This next slide is actually, uh, very, very encouraging. Um, i- if you look at the column on the right, that is the Advanced Ed Network of Schools that have been evaluated over the past year. Each of these data points here represent the average score from one through four that those schools combined averaged. The column to the left there, the review, that's SCPA's score. And as you can see, on a scale from one to four, in most cases, SCPA scored about a half of a point higher than all, the average of all of the other schools that were evaluated in the past year. Such areas as equitable learning environment, high expectations... Such areas as equitable learning environment, high expectations, supportive learning environment, active learning environment, progress monitoring and feedback, well-managed learning environment, and digital learning environment. Now, the one area that is good, because we score significantly higher than the other schools, is digital learning environment. It's good, but it's not good enough. All of these could be said to be not good enough because we have more growth to make. But we are, we are looking at that digital learning piece right there. And we hope to really push the technology and the digital learning forward, farther than we already have. Next slide, please. And this might deserve some applause. The external review team recommends to the Advanced Ed Accreditation Commission that the School for Creative and Performing Arts earn the distinction of accreditation for a five-year term. I just want to mention too that in all of these studies that have been done this year, they've all been tremendous learning experiences. They didn't come without sweat or pain or worry. But they came with a lot of heart from the staff and the teachers, the parents, the students. They really, everyone stepped up. In the accreditation process, for example, Beth Morgan, one of our teachers, did a phenomenal job organizing that. With some of the other visits, like DeVos and Arts School Network, a lot of people were heavily involved in providing the data that they used for their reports. It didn't magically come to them. They got it from the staff, the administrators. It was a lot of work, not only on their part, the visiting organizations, but our organization. And so we've had a very good, hard look at how we are performing this year. And there are some very good things that have come out of it. And there are some things that we definitely can do to grow and improve. I'd be happy to answer some questions on that. However, after Dr. Rudnick shares his piece, you might have some questions for some of our students that are visiting and our students might have some questions for you. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rudnick, who's going to share a little piece about the artistic component. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Dr. Rudnick.
Thank you. Good evening. One of our amazing, talented students, I think we're going to see him on Broadway in about eight or nine years. Edwigo Evans-Pritchett is handing out a PowerPoint presentation, which is a summary of some of the very many SCPA student accomplishments in the arts for the 2014-15 school year. I have been told to be very brief, so I will be very, very brief. I am proud to say that SCPA students of all ages are demonstrating their artistic abilities to the citizens of our city, our state, our country, and yes, even overseas. Whether it is a performance for our downtown Rotary Club, an adjudicated performance at the Ohio State University Jazz Festival, a musical performance and exhibition of visual artwork at the 2015 National Arts Education Concert in New York City, a showcase performance for educators from around the globe at the International Congress of School Effectiveness and Improvement. Do you remember that one, Mary? Where our kids sang beautifully for that? Or a participation in a Maersen Dance Masterclass with members of the one and only Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater, or an evening performance at the Antoni Bellini Opera Theater in Milan, Italy. SCPA students are challenging themselves to reach their artistic potential and they are delighting audiences in the process. So please take some time this week to read about some of our students and what they have achieved and worked so hard for in the past nine months. Also, I would like to tell you that at the conclusion of our last performance, you will also receive a digital copy of a summary of artistic highlights from this year. Lastly, it is my great pleasure to invite each of you to come and see our students perform in several different performance opportunities, starting with our spring ballet, April twenty-third through the twenty, excuse me, through the twenty-sixth, and finishing up with our concert weeks, the first two weeks in May. The students of SCPA are creative, they are passionate, they are talented, they are problem solvers, and it is a joy and a privilege to work with them every day. Thank you.
I just want to mention too that our district leadership kicked off a theme a year or so ago under the heading of servant leadership. And they have really, Dr. Lofton, Mr. Miles, Ms. Ronan, my immediate supervisors, they have really demonstrated that very well. And they respond to us, they're there to help us, and I appreciate that. I also want to mention our students as well, because after I watched that video a few minutes ago, it just reminds me, I am reminded daily, hourly, minute by minute, that our students are the most fantastic kids. They are so civic-minded, they are, they're reaching out worldwide, you know, Unified for Uganda, working around the community with the Gloves Program, like one of our students has. Just always reaching out, searching to do the best they can, but also ensuring that other people are doing well. And I'm inspired by them as well, so I want to thank them. I'd like to open it up to any questions if you have them. And feel free to make comments as well of our students who were presenting in the, in the video.
Mr. Elms.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Mr. Brokamp and Mr. Rudnick. Thank you for the presentations and thank you for the work that you do. Is Mr. Turnbull in the audience? Because he spoke to the very question that I was going to pose and that was, how do you reconcile academics, arts, and extracurricular activities? And he spoke to it so eloquently. I also want to say, I want the students of SCPA to know that I'm really impressed, and I'm sure the other board members are, with the way you articulated your experience. We don't hear that too often. So kudos. Kudos to you. But my question would probably be, and I got an education tonight, Mr. Brokamp. One is, explain to me what visual arts is and then technical theater? Because I don't have a clue. Totally.
Well, visual arts is the expression of, you know, actual physical art, painting, sculpture, et cetera. Technical theater, is that your other one? That's really work behind the scenes, the scenic, the costuming, everything that leads to creating a production on stage.
Thank you.
Good question.
Ms. Bowden.
Appreciate the presentation and also the attendance tonight. I know that we are all so proud of our students at SCPA and the tradition of excellence from SCPA and value greatly its role. We, you know, we kind of think we have a pantheon of high schools. We have the oldest one, I guess, what, west of the Alleghenies at Woodward. We've got the Walnut Hills, which is always in the top one hundred nationwide. And SCPA, the first to have a vision of the K-12, as well as fabulous community support. So it fits very well in that pantheon and we appreciate all that everybody's been doing to make sure that that continues. And particularly appreciate the pursuit of excellence by our students and staff. Really do. And as an old retired theater person, taught social studies by day and did theater by night, it's a great commitment and it's a great learning process. And it's a little city that has to exist with all the art folks and academic folks and athletes and what have you. So congratulations. And something that came up the other, just a few hours ago too, the idea that the community in rebuilding OTR chose our school to be the gateway to OTR was a real act of faith. And that school has done that neighborhood proud. And has been a great representative of that neighborhood. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
I definitely think that the theme rang clear, kids first. And I appreciated that. I think that's the best message we can send is that they are our most valuable asset here in this district and they're the reason we all come to work every day. So I want to give you some kudos for doing that, for highlighting that for us. It's very refreshing for us to see the fruits of our labor. These meetings are pretty boring, but it's exciting when we get to see what happens in their lives. And very impressive pamphlet here, all the accomplishments. Just so folks know, I was in the production of Oliver in nineteen ninety-five at SCPA. Oh, man. No, 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 I'll spare you guys that. But thanks so much for coming tonight and sharing this with us and congratulations on the accreditation again.
Thank you very much.
It is now the time for announcements, kudos, and retirements. We'll start with our kudos. Does anyone have any kudos?
Yeah, we have four kudos and so there's four of us that split the kudos. And so I'm going to start with Ms. Bates and then we'll go around and I'll bring up the rear.
Yes. I have kudos to Aiken High School students for paying it forward by raising funds to build a school for a small village in Largo, Sierra Leone in Africa. Previous fundraising efforts raised a thousand dollars, one-fourth of the total cost, which allowed construction to begin. To complete the job, the students organized a walkathon on Friday, March twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen, to raise the remaining three thousand dollars in construction costs. The students walked a little more than three miles to symbolize the distance students in the small African village would have to walk each way to get to the nearest school. The school will help give children at least the basic education they need at their doorstep, since some of them cannot make it to school at a distance of three miles away. The students were motivated and grateful for the generosity shown by Cincinnati taxpayers that resulted in the building of the brand-new, twenty-nine-million-dollar state-of-the-art facility.
Ms. Hough, kudos.
Sure, I brought along a kudos of my own, so I actually pass off one to Mr. Manera. But I wanted to make sure we put a kudos out and a plug out for anyone who would like to go. The Louder Than a Bomb Cincinnati Spoken Word Finals are this coming weekend. So if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, go online to the Louder Than a Bomb Cincinnati. And I wanted to give kudos out to many of our CPS students who are going to be in those finals. We have students from Aiken, Hughes, Walnut, and SCPA who have all made it to the finals. So definitely go check them out and support them on Saturday night.
Okay, and we also have kudos to Danita Hayes, a sixth-grade teacher at Rockdale Academy, for being selected as one of the 2015 Lindbergh Expeditions and National Geographic Governor Teacher Fellows. This opportunity allows her to bring immersive, to bring immersive geographic learning experiences back to the classroom and communities. Ms. Hayes is one of thirty-five highly respected educators from the United States and Canada to receive this honor. Later this year, Ms. Hayes will embark on a fifteen-day Lindbergh voyage aboard the National Geographic Explorer to the British and Irish Isles for a one-of-a-kind field experience. Accompanied by Ms. Lindbergh, National Geographic expedition experts will be coming along. The expedition will provide Ms. Hayes with new and exciting knowledge to bring back to CPS and integrate it into her lesson plan. Congratulations.
I have kudos for the Walnut Hills Robotics Team, known as the Nuts, for advancing to the first Tech Challenge World Championship after defeating seventy-one other teams from thirteen Midwestern states and joining the ranks of the first Tech Challenge North Super Regional Winning Alliance. The honor places them in the top eight among robotics teams in the United States. The Nuts earned an average score of five-hundred-and-eighty-two points per match, the highest of any team competing. In fact, they were the only team to score more than seven-hundred points, a feat they achieved four times in the competition. Their strong performance will be highly anticipated as they set out for the World Championship scheduled for April twenty-second through twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, in St. Louis, Missouri, where they will compete against a hundred-and-twenty-seven teams from sixteen countries. So good luck to the Nuts. I also have two short ones as well. Want to congratulate and kudos to my alma mater, Aiken, and also West High in Dater for marching in the opening day parade. And they were fantastic, obviously the best of the fifty bands I had to look at, to wait for them to get there. But at any rate, because they were the last entrance, they entered early, but were the last in the line. They were fabulous. And I know that we also want to congratulate a Walnut Hills student who has now made good on the theater boards, Mr. Eric Lynch, who is the son of Damon Lynch III and grandson of Damon Lynch Jr., as he is now appearing and making his Playhouse debut in a Playhouse show called The Buzzer, which deals with a number of issues that we all need to be concentrating on. So congratulations to a Walnut Hills student again. Well, there you go.
Eagles fly high.
No, all right. You stand to be corrected, Ms. Bowden, the Walnut Hills.
That's right.
But lastly, these kudos are to William Colbert, son of Walnut Hills, for placing third in the 2015 Scripps National Spelling Bee. Seventy students from around southwest Ohio participated in the regional spelling bee. We also say kudos to Eliza O'Keefe of Fairview Clifton German School and Sheridan Hennessy of Hyde Park for participating in the spelling bee. And when they start to do a sequel to Akila and the Bee, we have some prospective candidates. That's the end of the kudos, thank you.
Thank you. Probably our most robust kudos presentation ever. So we're proud tonight, this is great. Next, Ms. Bates, will you please present the retirements?
Yes, we have several people from our certificate, I'm sorry, from our civil service personnel who are retiring. Joseph Cato, Colleen Chapman, Pamela Shioponi, Sharon Kirk Young, Marion Klett, Dorothy Latham, Thomas McTurnan, Barbara Stenson, and Kathleen Whitaker are all retiring and we wish them well and thank them for their service.
All right, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. And there are quite a few speakers tonight. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Our treasurer, Mrs. Wagner, will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please be respectful of the buzzer this evening. Again, we have many people wishing to speak. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. I'm going to call our first three presenters and folks can kind of queue up on the side as we get through this list. So when your name is called, please come to the podium. Our first speaker is Barry Scholak. After Mr. Scholak, we will have Candace Morris and then Charles Walner. Mr. Scholak, we owe you apologies. I know you came last week to speak and unfortunately, we couldn't squeeze on the agenda. We do appreciate you coming back this evening, so thank you.
Excuse me, my name is Barry Scholak. Way of interaction, maybe I'll take these off, I keep resounding. My name is Barry Scholak, a long participant in school issues. Actually, a graduate of Walnut Hills High School back in nineteen forty-eight. What I'm here. What I wanted to speak to you about briefly is something in the Enquirer that talked about allowing alcohol on school property. And I'm very much against that. I think that's a bad route to go. I think that's a bad route to go. As a board member, I wrote this down, so it's sort of easier later lately to read things and talk simultaneously. So, as a board member, you have the responsibility to establish a culture that transcends the pressures of a larger society to allow students to learn. And I think allowing alcohol on school property doesn't do the right thing for your students. As a quote from a new book about the teenage brain, you might be interested in that new book, it quotes that says, "Teenagers are well-equipped to learn and exceedingly vulnerable to learn the wrong things. Since students' brains are relatively immature, you have to stuff their minds with real stories and real consequences." So, introducing liquor on school boards to entertain adults doesn't seem to be the right direction to go. Just allowing that thing, that to happen would also encourage and would make you to have to monitor smoking, which I think you ban. You would have to monitor for guns, you would have to monitor for drugs. So, I think to allow liquor to be on campuses is just not the approach to go. Thank you very much. By the way, that book, if you'd like to read that book, it's called Teenage Brain and it's E.J. Jensen. It talks about how the brain is somewhat immature and is developing as you grow and actually the brain doesn't really get to the full potential until maybe 18 to 20, 22 years old when you're in college. So, the brain of teenagers is very vulnerable to how you teach and what you present as a culture. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scholak. Our next speaker is Candace Morris. She'll be followed by Charles Walner and then Tara and Leonard Dean.
I'm here because my daughter attends Orion Academy.
Speaking of the mic, it's difficult to hear you.
My daughter attends Orion Academy and her bus is late almost every day and I lost a job during the winter because of the bus service and I just feel like nobody's gonna do anything until somebody snatches a kid. That's when something's gonna be done. They got the robocall set up, but her pickup time is at 7:03. The robocall doesn't come until 7:33, so meaning she's outside for 30 minutes, she's 11. And my whole thing is, what do we do? Monica Jones doesn't call anyone back. I've been going through this all school year. I have a datebook of every day this bus was late, every day. So, it's like, they at work, I can't go to work. I'm a home health aide, I take care of the elderly. I can't leave my client outside or alone or anything and if I leave my child at home at 11, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get in trouble, right? You get a case, you know, child endangerment, whatever, but it's okay for the bus company to leave a little kid outside? I just don't understand, nobody's doing anything. I call Mr. Davis, Mr. Osterman, I'm not, I don't know if I'm saying his name right, First Student Transportation. I just called Ohio Department of Education today. I'm like, when is somebody gonna do something?
Tonight.
Just wondering, did y'all know this is going on? First Student, like, I feel like the bus rides gotta be at a certain time. They know by at least 6:30 that this bus is gonna be late. They can't give us a robocall before then, during the winter, below zero. My daughter outside 30, 40 minutes, who cares? They in a warm building, nobody cares about the kids. I'm just like, I'm frustrated. I'm so frustrated because if I lose another job, who cares? Nobody, like, they got jobs. I won't have a job, I gotta go find another job. And I just feel like somebody needs to be held accountable. Only chance it's gonna happen is when one of these kids gets snatched, get hurt, then everybody gonna be like, oh, my goodness, they gonna wanna fix it then, but it's in y'all, I'm letting y'all know now, like, can y'all get this together, fix it or something? Because I'm tired of leaving my kid outside for two-hour delays, really? Nine o'clock? Come on, school start at 8:30. Like, just so y'all know, I'm gonna let y'all know this is going on about First Student, they not doing they job. Monica Jones does not return parents' calls at all. Who cares? She got a job. She don't care. Her kid ain't out there, mine is. Can somebody care about my daughter? She be laughing, she's not built like a normal 11-year-old. So, if a man walk up, pull up on her on the corner, snatch her, I ain't gonna find out, you know why? No robocall. Took 30 minutes later and she gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Can we make sure that? It's a safety issue. Safety issue, can we make sure that someone from the information follows up with Ms. Morris this evening? Mary?
We have a.
Who will that be?
Can we have it do it now?
Yeah. Ms. Morris? Mr. Mooreing will speak with you. Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Thank you.
Mr. Walner? And then we have Tara and Leonard Dean, followed by Leonard Dean. So, I guess you're doing two-for-one tonight. And then the next speaker will be, after Mr. Dean, Althea Thompson.
Good afternoon, good evening, actually. How are you guys? That's good. I'm the director of Faith Community Alliance of Greater Cincinnati. It's an organization that has about 35 agencies per month at its meetings and a conduit of five, well, that's too, about 300 agencies in the community. I'm also coordinating a subset of that called Prepare the Future Ohio, which some of you may know, we've done workshops and education forums in the region on education in the last few years. We've been asked to involve ourselves in finding information, not only locally, but on a national level, about the accelerator movement. We're preparing a series of surveys to you for each member of the board and the superintendent, as well as to the archdiocese and to the, I guess, the union head, the CFT. This is only one phase of it. We're doing a literature search on it currently, right now, on the concept and then we'll be doing maybe other searches, some discussions, whether we'll have a roundtable discussion on it or whatever, I can't say at this moment. The reason we're doing this is that beyond even those who are immediately involved in education, there's questions in the community about what it means, there's some vagarity of terms and terminology that don't seem to really be clearly answered, doesn't mean the definitions aren't there. Also, there's the issue where the pedagogy behind it is involved, that type of stuff. So, I will be in contact with your conduit between you and the board and each one of you will have an individual survey. We can have it back in about 30 days, it'll be very short questions, rather not long essays, we're not really into that right now. We'll make a report on that, plus our other studies, maybe within 30 to 60 days, if the data allows that or not. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Walner. Mr. Dean will be followed by Althea Thompson and then Jack Fawcett.
Okay, well, me and my wife had an issue. I'll deal with that second. I'm here representing Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition. I'm a parent organizer for the group and we have some concerns about this so-called accelerator, which we looking at as privatizing education. I'm gonna read a letter, I'm sure everyone has it. At the March 9, 2015 Board of Education meeting, representatives from the Farmer Foundation and the Cincinnati Business Community presented a $25 million initiative called the Accelerator Fund. The presenters confirmed their proposal is to create new high-performing charter schools that will be operated separately from the district. They estimate that there are only 4,000 quality seats in CPS and these new charter schools will provide an alternative to the lack of high, the so-called lack of high-performing seats in the district. They are currently hiring a CEO to implement their goal, which is to double the number of students to approximately 4,300 attending high-performing schools in five years and to quadruple that number of students approximately 14 to 14,000 attending high-performing schools within 10 years. The Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition calls on the Cincinnati Public School District to reject these goals. The Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition is concerned that our local business and school district community is being misled by outside groups on what is best for the schoolchildren of Cincinnati. The Accelerator Fund may appear well-intentioned, but its agenda is quite familiar to those of us who have been working diligently in the field of educational justice. We feel strongly that all stakeholders to our public schools need to understand what this outsider's agenda is and here are a few concepts of the Accelerator Fund, quality seats. This is a concept that is often used by private interests, often used by private interests looking to make a profit from our public schools. It is based on the premise that only some of our children will succeed. We demand our district leadership to reject this notion and recommit to the community learning center model that ensures every child, no matter their test score, is provided a quality education. Their statement that there are only 4,000 quality seats in Cincinnati Public Schools is right out of a playbook whose ultimate goal is to close inner-city schools and privatize our district. We have already seen the failure of this experiment in other cities and we call on our district to reject this notion. A second thing is high-performing schools. The Accelerator Fund hopes to create district-sponsored charter schools as the turnaround model to help lower-performing schools. The end game of these reform efforts is always to close inner-city schools and reconstitute them as private charters. They say it will leave behind only high-performing options, but really, all this left behind are thousands of children whose test scores do not allow them to move from their home school. The proven model for helping all students who attend inner-city schools is the community learning center model. Another thing they said was our children are human capital pipelines.
Mr. Dean, your three minutes is up if you want to address the other topic you came for.
Okay, I get to. My issue with my other issue is Withrow High School baseball team, they have to play all their games away. And we're in this new ECC conference and my son, he plays for Withrow, which means his home games are at Kings. Parents cannot get to Kings by 4:30. So, I'm not sure what the issue is or why, but Walnut Hills players there is at the Urban Youth Academy and I'm just wondering why Withrow can't play theirs there, especially since we've had problems in the ECC. I have an email here, glad to let you have a copy, but we're having problems with racial slurs, our kids being called derogatory names by students and parents at these and we let the Withrow administration know, we've sent the email to the ECC director back on February the 5th and no one has said anything to us yet, but yet you want me to send my child out here to play twice a year? And I'm wondering how come, being that we know that Withrow's field is being redone, how come is that they can't play their games at the Urban Youth Academy where CPS, P&amp;G, Cincinnati Reds are all partners? I wonder why Walnut Hills can't. Nothing against Walnut Hills, I'm a graduate of Walnut Hills High School, but my son goes to Withrow and that's a little more important right now. So, I'm trying to figure out what are we gonna do to make sure we don't have to keep sending our kids out here into this hostile environment? Once a year is fine because that's how it is, but they need to come down here in the city, at least our parents can be there to support our children here in the city because right now, they don't have a home game on the schedule and we get to see our kids twice when they play Walnut Hills at the Urban Youth Academy and when they play Purcell, whose home field happens to be the Urban Youth Academy. So, if you can get back to me as soon as possible, because I don't want to have to fall out about, with my son about making him quit no baseball team because I don't trust where you sending him to to play. Thank you.
For bringing that to our attention, I'm gonna ask the Mr. Miles follow-up and Mr. Nomtia.
Yeah, I want to say, Leonard, thank you. As a board, we're not privy to information sometime that goes on in the community. If we know, we can respond. Can you see Mr. Bill, Miles and the other Mr. Bill? And then, would you see me before you leave and can we get a copy of the responses that you've sent out?
Thank you. Will be followed by Jack Fawcett, who will be followed by Linda Tru, TruO, I'm sorry.
TruX.
TruO?
Jack.
TruX. Okay, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening. My name's Althea Thompson. I'm sorry I've had a bad cold. Pardon me. I'm gonna start out by answering your questions. Visual arts deals in the following areas and I'm speaking from SCPA about the visual arts department. In architecture, if you walk into a building, it's part of environmental design, that's part of the visual arts. So, you can't actually have buildings without visual artists. If you get into your car, you have to have a transportation designer and that is a branch set of industrial designs. You won't have speakers, you won't have chairs, you won't have any of the products that you use, no phones, without industrial design. Graphic design are all visual images, both moving and stationary. So, when you have a book, when you have brochures, when you send someone a letter, when you need to look up a website, all of that is graphic design. There are other areas, you can't drive through your city streets unless you have urban design, you can't get dressed without fashion design. So, it's a field that touches global and it touches everything that you guys touch every day and that is one of the avenues or branches that's at SCPA. SCPA trains graphic designers, visual fine artists, architects. In the last 10 years alone, we have graduated architects, industrial designers, fine artists, fashion designers. The top winners for overtures in the last seven years have been SCPA art majors. They've either won or they've come in second place. We are part of a program where we are the school of choice or highly recommended. So, the school that's number one in the country, College for Creative Studies in Detroit, has SCPA's visual arts listed as the preferred place to recruit. Maryland Institute College of Art and Design, Ringling College of Art and Design, Savannah, which has a campus in Atlanta, Savannah, Hong Kong, and France, we are listed as one of their top schools to recruit from. School of the Art Institute of Chicago, students go to Virginia Commonwealth University, which is number one art university in the country, as well as DAP here at the University of Cincinnati. So, many of our students, I just want to point out, the type of people that we're training, 95% of our students graduate from our department and go directly into those colleges and into those fields. So, when you look at Time Magazine, you'll see illustrations designed by Michael Holweller, who graduated from SCPA. You'll see clothing lines created by Eliza Starbuck, who graduated from SCPA. If you're watching television and you're looking at graphics, the beginning graphics at news, SCPA.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. You didn't mention my sister Jessica, who was a graduate of the visual arts department. It's okay, I'm just teasing you.
You have.
Jack Fawcett, followed by Linda TruX, followed by Stormy Goins-Manival are our next speakers. Is Mr. Fawcett in the audience? Okay. Linda TruX. And after Ms. Goins-Manival will be Tom Kleindust.
Hello, board. I'm Linda TruX, a parent of SCPA and you weren't finished with the kudos, I have a few more.
All right.
We're proud to announce that our SCPA a cappella group, The Baby Grants, participated in Festival Disney at Disney World in Florida a couple of weeks ago. The Baby Grants, a group of 11 female students, competed against 6,000 students from all over the United States for a vocal choir competition. Our small group was by far the smallest ensemble competing, however, we may be small, but we are mighty. The Baby Grants set the bar so high for everyone else, they received a superior rating, which was the highest score received by any choir in attendance. They also won gold in their division, which was first place, and received the honor of being voted the best of the best overall choir for the entire festival. We are so proud of this amazing group of girls and their extraordinary choir director, Lori Wyant, and we actually have one of these students here, which is Andouelle Hassan. Andouelle, you want to stand? Kudos.
Fola will be following this public speech. Fola will be following this, uh, public speech.
Kudos to Baby Grants. Jasperl is a group of seven vocalists and three musicians from SCPA directed by SCPA parent Angela Thompson, were invited to perform at the Freedom Center on Good Friday, which was April 3rd, for the Citywide Words of Freedom event. Jasperl is a group of students that got together on off-hours, and they perform music that is jazz, gospel, R&B, funk, and they are incredible, and if you need a great group to perform for you, you can hire them out. Kudos to Jasperl. Dr. Rudnick mentioned this, but I will give you a little bit more detail. SCPA Super Jazz Band, under the direction of Erwin Stuckey, attended Ohio State University Jazz Festival yesterday. Several of our students were awarded All-Stars, and they were Luke Smith, who plays guitar, Andwele Hassan, again, on vocals, and Joshua Cook on drums. Also, Romell Sims, who is trumpet, and Lexi Hamner on trombone, were awarded Best Solist and received a scholarship to OSU Jazz Summer Camp. We have yet to find out the rankings, um, I'm sure our school will be in the top three, if not number one, but kudos also to SCPA Super Jazz Band. And last, SCPA Super Jazz Band performs at the Washington Platform Restaurant, which is very close to SCPA, um, on Sunday, April 26th, from 4 to 6, and it's immediately after Dracula Ballet finishes, and I'm going to give you brochures. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Stormy Goins-Manival, followed by Tom Klydens.
And you pronounced it correctly, thank you. Um, I already previously this year sent a letter by email, hopefully the board members received it, in which I briefly commended SCPA for their open enrollment granted by CPS, of course, for students who were out of the Cincinnati District to come and enroll in the school. I have two, my husband and I, have two Asian children we adopted, and they attended a school in another district in Hamilton County, and were the only Asians in those, that school. And there were a lot of limitations for them. Being very talented in music and art and drama, et cetera, they had no outlet there at their school. And we waited and tried for many years to get them into SCPA, and were thrilled when the opening enrollment happened. We could not afford the tuition-based program that had occurred before, although we wanted to desperately. So I want to thank the school, and I want to encourage the school to please keep that avenue open. Uh, because there are many other students I'm sure that fit in our category, where they need to be in a multicultural school, they need the opportunity to pursue what they're very good at. My daughter is gifted in art, has been since elementary school, and was given no, in fact, they kept cutting their program down to 30 minutes a week. That is no way for a child who really scores and does well at writing and art. She won awards in her school, but had no extra training. So in one year, being at SCPA this year, she has earned excellence in her boards. The first boards have been finished, she's working on her second. Our son has been able to pursue drama and technical theater and is excelling in that. And as I look at the opportunities, keep in mind, I worked for the city, for the Hamilton County, and I've worked as a social worker, I work now in the court system, I deal with families coming from the greater Cincinnati area, I work with the students, the kids, in various aspects, and I know the need of the students in this district, and I know what happens when they don't get what they need in school, and they end up in my arena, which is the court system, and in trouble. And I want to support everything this board is doing throughout the city of Cincinnati to improve youth opportunity, youth education, youth getting off the streets and into productive jobs and productive careers and having safe neighborhoods. So I'm here to say, yes, on a personal level, please keep the opening enrollment opportunity for out-of-district students, but at the same time, I am here to support any and everything the board does to improve the lives of the kids that I see when they turn 18 now, who I used to see as a protective social worker and went into their homes and saw the dire straits they were in. Thank you.
And our final speaker this evening will be Mr. Tom Klydens.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tom.
I'm Tom Klydens. I'm chairman of the board of the Greater Cincinnati Arts and Education Center, commonly known as GCAEC. However, tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the donors and investors, past, present, and future, who are supporters of the School for Creative and Performing Arts. And I certainly don't want any of my comments to be misconstrued as criticism of any of the fine performances and successes that you've heard about tonight from the school. In the year 2000, there was a dream and a vision resulting in the formation of a partnership between the private sector and Cincinnati Public Schools. That partnership was finalized by the Board of Education in 2005. The subject was the funding and construction of a state-of-the-art facility for the School of Creative and Performing Arts. That partnership was dramatically successful, as evidenced by the new Eric Kunsel Center on Central Parkway, which serves as a gateway to Over the Rhine and an amazing home for But there was also an underlying vision by the private sector partner. That was a vision of an institution of academic and artistic excellence that would become world-renowned and a true jewel in the crown of Cincinnati Public Schools and the community it serves. For a number of reasons, that vision and commitment has been allowed to wither. Last June, a small group gathered to determine whether to rejuvenate that vision or walk away. Fortunately, the decision was to rejuvenate, but learning from the past, there were conditions. It is acutely apparent that without the enthusiastic commitment and support of the Board of Education and the administration of CPS to this shared partnership vision, it will fail. Not wanting to appear dictatorial, we encouraged and helped fund outside professionals to analyze the challenges and problems creating hurdles to the accomplishment of the vision. You have seen the reports from Arts Schools Network and DeVos Institute. We urge you not only to seriously consider their recommendations, but to act on them. We are again at a crossroad. This is not the time for hesitation. Without visible credible evidence of enthusiastic commitment on your part for artistic and academic excellence, excellence at SCPA, the vision, commitment, and enthusiasm of the private sector will once again wither, and we fear this time, it will die. We cannot allow another school year to pass without action. We owe it to our community, and more importantly, to its children, not to let this opportunity be wasted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent, do you have a report for us this evening?
No, I don't.
Thank you very much. Um, do I, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Wagner, your report, do I have any questions or anything related to the treasurer's report? Board? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent? Thank you.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Think I might have a question. Sorry, I was, you were so efficient.
I'm sorry, but our president caught me off-guard, right? Go on.
Hi. Maybe it's just the treasurer's report that I want to ask some questions, but...
Okay.
Let me check. Oh, just how happy we will all be, I'm sure, to vote on the superintendent's recommendations regarding, uh, G, Director of Human Resources, Mr. Paul McCall. It's a red-letter day, and, and that's worked out real well.
Great. Thank you very much, Board Member Bolton. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Aye.
Ms. Bolton.
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Aye.
Mr. Hop, Mrs. Hoffman. Mr. Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nelms.
Aye.
President Coons.
And to approve the report of the treasurer.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have one question.
Yes.
Um, there was an interesting bullet around, um, professional development at Harvard Graduate School of Education for a, it looks like a cohort of principals and an assistant superintendent, and I'm wondering if someone can speak to what that is? I think we are all very excited, anytime we can give them targeted professional development.
Yes, I'm going to ask Dr. Lofton.
This coming June, we'll have all 15 of our high school principals attend, um, the Harvard Principal Center, um, to engage in some job-embedded professional development around leadership, curriculum development, um, and, uh, organizational school structure.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Dansby.
Yeah, I do have a question related to the report of the treasurer. It's item number one, a receipt of a grant from the City of Cincinnati for H2E, H2S, and I'm wondering if someone could explain, um, my questions are, is that a grant? Is that an ongoing opportunity? And who provides that service to the children at that particular school?
Uh, this actually came from, uh, the City of Cincinnati Police Department. We applied for a grant and received it.
Gotcha. Thank you. Makes perfect sense.
Just have, um, one specific question about number two. I just was unaware of what NACC concert travel expenses are. It's number two. What does, I'm not sure what that stands for.
Oh, and the SCPA people just left the room. Who could tell me what that stands for?
This, uh...
I think it's the National Arts Education Council.
Is that, is that, is that kids going, or? I'm not sure. Well, if we can just have a follow-up to that, I don't know if it was a field trip or... When I looked up those initials, it came out some very interesting things that it stands for, which I won't go into now.
Ms. Simon, you don't know?
Not NACC.
Okay.
I'd Google it, too.
It's a little unusual. Thank you, I mean, just, I was ahead of question, and maybe we can have a follow-up.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bates.
Aye.
Ms. Bolton.
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nelms.
Yep.
President Coons.
Aye.
All right, for inquiries and updates this evening, our first is the National School Board Association Council of Urban Education, Urban Boards of Education, affectionately known as Cube. Mr. Nelms?
Yeah, as a charge from the board, I did a follow-up and I talked to our illustrious, know-it-all, uh, Mrs. Pat, and she explained to us that our membership is predicated on us also being a member of the, um, NSBA, and it's just an extension, and our membership, the Cube, is tied into that at no extra cost. Is that right, Pat?
It's our classification within NSBA.
Don't have to, yeah. Did you hear that?
I have a clear. It's free. Like, free.
And I'm a half-graduate.
All right. Our second item is the National School Board Association Advocacy Institute. I prepared a brief summary, and Mr. Nelms and I would like to apologize for being so late in reporting back. Earlier this year, Board Member Nelms and I had the opportunity to attend the annual National School Board Association Advocacy Institute in our nation's Capitol. The purpose of the conference is to prepare school board members to meet with their congressional representatives on Capitol Hill. We attended many helpful sessions, including Maze of mistrust, how district politics and cross-talks are stalling efforts to improve education, and telling the school board's story, why and how. The primary goal of NSBA was to help its members advocate for the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Given the controversy over some details within the legislation, specifically Title I dollars, um, as a aside, the council on great city schools is opposed to the reauthorization, we rather took the opportunity with our congressmen to focus on the need to fund universal quality preschool and to continue to support local control of school governance. The opportunity to network with fellow board members from around the country was also something that we took advantage of. Mr. Nelms, did you have anything to add?
Yeah. Ditto.
Are there any questions or comments from the board members?
Um, not necessarily a question, but I want to thank the both of you for spearheading that and taking the time out to go, um, to travel to DC and bring information back to us. So, thank you very much.
Gladly. I would encourage board members that haven't had the chance to go on that, um, trip to try to do so next year. It's every February, you'll have to watch the Super Bowl in DC, but, you know...
Not a problem.
Yeah, it's not a problem. And, uh, our third item, NSBA Annual Conference, Mrs. Bolton.
Uh, thank you. Um, first of all, it is a follow-up to Cube, the toy I brought back from Nashville is from the Cube Reception.
Thank you.
Reception. So it's a Rubik's Cube that is specific to our needs. It shows very interesting children and teachers on it. Um, so have fun with that. But it was a very good, uh, conference, and, uh, a number of things that were touched on. Um, the opening, um, uh, session was by Jane Polly, who talked not only about the Mine Trust, because she's a board member in Indianapolis, is an Indiana Hoosier native, but also talked about the issues that we have publicly as people, um, look at their alma maters and see different people in their buildings, that how do you continue to keep that loyalty going if they can't see themselves in that crowd? And I think we've been really struggling and working well to try to, to deal with that, which I think is, is particularly good. Also, there was a sponsored by the National Black Council of School Board Members, a restorative justice, uh, effort, and I would really like to make sure that we kind of make connection with something called the Advancement Project, uh, which is really dwelling on how you move that positive school culture away from the zero base, zero tolerance, and instead start talking about restorative justice. They did a very good job, and they, they featured the San Francisco, uh, school district, but particularly that, uh, group that presented was really good. Also, something that I think is important to the board, and these are the small sessions, but from Roanoke City Public Schools, where they have 13,000 or so kids, um, they have created an equity policy, an equity committee, and also have an equity scorecard that is posted, and that that's what the board uses to annually review, are we making, are we moving along the way to greater and greater equity? So I thought that was good. Policy committee, and also literally a scorecard. Um, and then there was also the creating a culture and urban setting, and that was out of Tacoma, Washington. And remember, there's like 400 sessions, so I could only go to six or so. But from Tacoma, uh, it operationalized its vision of every student every day by creating a college-going culture, and learned how urban-setting district aligned its resources, beliefs, and actions to dramatically change the outcomes for highly impacted students. And so it brought back from them, curiously enough, a pamphlet about the Whole Child Initiative that they are in the midst of, something that might be of use to us, as well as moving from more remediation and compliance to a more rigorous curricular effort. So that's Tacoma, Washington. All very interesting. All very interesting. The other... The last couple, one was from a fabulous professor at Harvard, David Doctorman, Harvard Graduate School, and also the chief scholar for scholastic education. And he talks about what the superintendent and the deputy superintendent have been leading us in regarding My Tomorrow, which is rigor and grit, and the idea that you're rewarding work and you make it important in your culture, that kids understand that all the work will pay off. Knowledge, skills, and strategies lead to resilience that coupled with domain-specific knowledge, skills, and strategies lead to academic success. He was outstanding. And then the last one, the last two. One was from Eminence, Kentucky, where they have seven hundred and fifty kids, and it's pretty close to us. And they're one of four school districts in the United States that was given the, denoted as districts of innovation. And what they've done, it's like My Tomorrow also, highly personalized, heavy into blended learning, and it's radically changed their little district and increased their enrollment significantly. Last is a follow up to what we heard from, again, My Tomorrow and also the efforts with the business community. In a hundred and twelve thousand enrolled district, the Junior Achievement Group of Southeast Texas, JA, hosts at their convention center, which is pretty scary, all of their eighth graders in their school district. And this is a lot of kids. And what they do is they do a year or so of career exploration in the school building, and then they create this massive, and they had to break it up to be more than just one, where the business community meets with these kids. The kids are kind of shuffled into the places where indeed they've been identified as being interested, and then the business community supports that and pays for that. So it was a really cool thing. So, great conference, and Nashville was fun, and I appreciate being able to go.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. A lot of cool ideas. It sounds like Student Achievement Committee might need some assignments with some of those ones. No pressure. Next, we have the Accelerator CEO search, Ms. Dansby.
Yeah, I wanted to give an update to my fellow board members related to the Accelerator CEO searches. You know that I am a member of that particular search committee, if you will. So, I'm going to read this from my computer. There were forty-five applicants or applications. Twenty-three were considered, given their qualifications. Six of those folks were local, and of those folks, only two local candidates had education experience. There were five interviews held last Tuesday, and tomorrow, there is a second round of interviews with four of those five candidates. And so, in my effort to keep you all informed about the progress in that, that is my update related to the Accelerator CEO search.
Thank you, Vice President Dansby. We have a few other late adds to the inquiries and updates. The Preschool Promise Committee or Board?
Yeah. So this is something that I wanted to bring to the attention of my colleagues here at the table as well. I've been asked to serve on what is being termed as the Preschool Promise. This is one in particular that I thought would be best to bring to the table for discussion. So I don't know if anyone has any comment related. Looks like...
Thanks.
Preschool Promise has been assigned to the board by the student... Or to the Student Achievement Committee. So, I mean, it would be the board's pleasure, but I would think since the board had already delegated that to Student Achievement, that Student Achievement would... Yeah, take the lead on this. Say, and discuss the pros and the cons and bring that back to you. But, I mean, what do you think of that? I've also been asked to serve on the board, so I would like some input.
That would be great.
Because Greg Lansman asked me also. Yeah, and actually, he knew that this was being assigned to the committee, so, you know, maybe he just doesn't understand...
Protocol.
Our protocols. So we can let him know that that's, you know, that the Student Achievement Committee is now considering Preschool Promise and that will make the recommendation to the board and give Mary advice. I will. I'll be glad to call him and let him know.
And I'll also send a note back to an email, to him as well as his board chair, just so that there is complete understanding of what our protocol is and exactly where that request stands.
Ms. Bolton.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think it's great to have representation, but as we've said a couple of times in the last several months, I appreciate Student Achievement taking on the responsibility. This board really does need to talk very seriously about Preschool Promise and how it has evolved. And I know you're going to have some presentations, perhaps, from what this preschool... It's one thing to be in favor of preschool, it's another thing to be in favor of Preschool Promise, and then for us to be fully aware of what their plans actually are, which directly impact our own levy interests and our own interests in serving our population.
That is correct.
So we really, and I think that, I think every board member's really asked for that kind of conversation, so I do think we need to have it.
So we'll kind of defer the invitation to Student Achievement?
I think that would be most appropriate.
Mr. Minera.
And on that, on that note of transparency, and that we really haven't had a full discussion, I'm just curious, were you... Ms. Copeland-Dansby, were you asked to represent the board? Or this is just completely different and you just happen to bring this up? Because we also have Mary, so I'm just trying to figure out...
Yeah.
Is the community going to look at you as a liaison from the board, which we haven't had any discussion, if that's the case?
Well, and that's what I want to be clear with, and, you know, due respect to transparency, that's why I'm bringing you to the table for this discussion. It wasn't said, "Board Member Dansby," or, you know, or otherwise. And so, for me, knowing that Student Achievement, because I read all the reports of all the committees, right? Has invited several folks with pertinent information to come to their committee and that. So I just thought it would be great to bring it up for conversation tonight. I do, though, think it is sort of, I don't know, in the world of the liaison, but in support of the spirit of collaboration.
So, so, no, that's awesome. And you're so involved in the community, I...
Sure.
I would have you on a board if I needed a board. But I just want to make sure we're communicating out to the community, and because people hear what they want to hear or don't, we don't communicate enough to what they need to hear. Are we communicating to the Preschool Promise through Student Achievement and then to Superintendent in order to keep things flowing?
Well, I think that just kind of got started, right?
I know, but we should have a plan.
I think we're allowing the committee to come up with that plan.
Right.
Perhaps make a recommendation for someone from the administration.
Yeah.
Or perhaps a board member, but maybe to be on that board.
I've met with Mr. Lansman after our committee's invitation, and I have a good deal of information. So, yes, we're, it's ongoing communication. We just, and, you know, he's very anxious to have us become involved. We just, you know, we have a process.
Okay. Next. Oh, sorry, Ms. Bolton.
We will have to create, I would assume, since a lot of us have spoken with Mr. Lansman and others and what have you, as they get ready to make final decisions, it will be important for us to have a board position. And we'll need the superintendent and the treasurer to help us with that position, rather than necessarily, you know, the individuals, because we'll have to figure out what it is we want to do and what the questions we still need answered, which I think Student Achievement can help with.
Thank you. Our next item is something the superintendent has brought up to our attention, the GE Smithsonian Institute.
I probably should have done this under my report, but it's also kind of an assignment. GE Aviation would like to invite one of the, one of the board members to actually sit with their upper management as they roll out this Smithsonian project expansion. GE Aviation has been working in the past two years with Evanston Academy, really trying to bring all the wonderful things at the Smithsonian Museum, which most of our children don't have access to, to the school with video conferencing, and it's gone very, very well. So next year, they'd like to do a pilot in another three or four schools, but ultimately, over the next five years, expand it to all the children in our district. So they're just getting started, trying to figure out how it will all work, and they would like a representative from the board. So that's my ask, if one of you would like to sit on the board. You know, David Joyce is on the Smithsonian Board, which is why he's so interested in providing this opportunity for our children.
Any nominations? Or do we want to...
I nominate, I nominate the president if he so desires, because you pretty much represent and speak for the board. And if that's not the case, then we can represent whoever wants to decide to go after that, who has an interest.
I'm honoring Mr. Nelms. I will have to decline, though, just due to time constraints. I think I have a bit too much on my plate at this point, so I'd hate to commit to something that I can't give my all to.
Should we talk about another board member?
Do we know the time commitment? I would imagine, I would guess maybe once a month.
I've seen the program in action. I think it's awesome, and I think piloting it or having it at Evanston over the past year has been absolutely awesome. I'm very appreciative of the support from GE to Cincinnati Public School District. And so unless someone else is burning to do it, I'd be happy to do it with an alternate. And Alisa? Great, thank you.
Okay, excellent. There we go. Thanks, guys. All right. I'm going to add one more final update.
Than I have, just to quickly.
Give yours first, go ahead.
Just quick. Okay. Today, the Student Achievement Committee met and went over the superintendent's evaluation, and a big part of this is not just how we're evaluating the superintendent, but because we're using a brand-new instrument to make sure that we could validate it as much as we can. So, we want to go ahead and now ask to schedule a full board, some time with the full board to go over this, some executive session time, and hopefully, I don't know what's going on at the upcoming COW meetings, but really, the sooner the better, so that we can get a good, good look at this and...
Okay.
Share the information that we saw with you, both, you know, from the way we use the instrument to how it, you know, kind of fleshed out.
Yeah. We'll definitely make time to put that on our upcoming agenda. I don't have the schedule on... What does the vice president mean this for? Okay, so...
Remember, Bates, should we mention that there are two outstanding, there's still two to be completed, two people to complete it, and if they want to, they still can?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so we know that one person had problems getting, logging in. So whoever that person is, get back with Paul McDoll, and he will help you get back in. Then there's somebody who's unaccounted for. So, and we were even questioning ourselves, did we really do it? Or maybe you tried to submit it and didn't submit?
That got me wondering.
I know. So...
I'm sorry, what's the issue?
We're one short. Well, we are too short in our responses. One person's been accounted for, that person has been having trouble logging in, so that person still can have, can work with...
That's me.
Can you check to see, is there a verification?
We can.
That's me.
It's anonymous.
Yeah, so we don't know who did and who didn't. So...
Tell the truth about it.
That's, that's what we were kind of figuring, that either it wasn't submitted or we were doing so many at one time that...
Someone clicked submit too many times and...
Or something.
...bought out the system, maybe.
But somebody's missing.
That's me.
Okay.
Well, we know about you, because you confessed.
I got you, Mary.
But, but you're good. You're...
Yeah.
Well...
Paul will help you.
Yeah.
If, if individuals came, is there some way we could un-anonymize it?
I like that word.
I'm a CPS grad, made that word up on the spot. Just in case, like, the folks that thought they did it...
Well, I can, I can tell you who the fake name was.
Yeah.
If you guys remember who you were.
Oh, jeez.
Mine is on my refrigerator.
Oh.
On that one.
Yeah, I don't either.
I'm just a pantry.
Huh. The password, I remember the password. I don't remember anything else. Well, you know, if worse comes to worse, we move there with six?
Yeah, that's better than five.
Better than spend another three hours re-completing it just to be safe. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And bring your notes.
Yeah.
Whenever we schedule this.
So when we do, it looks like it's going to have to be the twenty-seventh, or twenty-second COW meeting has, already has... Oh.
He was grateful and...
Mr. Mormon, you're out of town on Monday, the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Yes.
Shame on you.
That's why we had to look at a COW.
So May sixth?
He helped us through Student Achievement Committee, like, helping facilitate the conversation, since he created the tool and whatnot.
Can we either wait till May sixth or ask Mr. McDoll to be the Mr. Mormon of the future?
Mr. Mormon...
If he's not here, he could kind of help Paul just understand the tool to, you know what I mean? So we wouldn't need Joe. He could, if Paul could be his understudy. Does that make sense?
I mean, I think, unless there are a lot of questions related to the functionality of the tool...
I think that's what it's all about.
That's what part of it is.
Yeah.
Because it's a new tool and we had, we had questions, and we didn't know if, if it was because the, you know, the...
The way that...
The way it was written or, you know, more so than the responses. Why did you respond that way?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that we'd be dealing with responses. It looks like Mr. McDoll has something to say.
Yeah. That's right.
Okay. Is... We've got a crowded agenda coming up. I mean, because that's quality seats, too. That's going to take a lot of time. Yeah. We might have to come in on another day. If we, I don't know that we can abut an upcoming meeting, because they're all pretty packed.
The COWs are?
The COWs are, yeah. So, why don't we get with Phyllis, and we'll figure out an upcoming date when we can come in. Awesome. Okay. Last item, the DeVos Report. As Mr. Klindt brought up in the hearing of the public, I just wanted to say that the board has gotten the final written report from DeVos. The administration has it, too. We are in the process of reviewing it still, and so just want to assure you that there will be a follow-up public conversation, and so we will respond to the requests that you've made and the items you've pointed out. And just stay in tune to our upcoming agendas. We'll make sure we get it on one of them as soon as possible. Assignments. Are there any assignments? Oh, yes.
Yes, an assignment around the SCPA data that we received. I think hearing from all of our really compelling speakers tonight can reinforce that SCPA really is an institution that's creating world-renowned artists. And so, we are hoping that Dr. Lofton could expand the analysis he did and report with some comparison schools that I think might be more appropriate comparisons than other schools in Ohio. So if we're being recruited as one of the top public art schools in the country, then I think we need to see how SCPA compares to other top public art schools in the country, so the Duke Ellingtons of the world. So when it comes to things like graduation rate and acceptance rates to college, ACT scores, AP scores, I don't think we want to compare ourselves to just art schools in Ohio. We want to compare ourselves to the best out there. I think also, when it comes to ACT scores, instead of comparing to other CPS schools, again, if we say we're a rigorous academic curriculum, we want to make sure that students can get accepted to universities and conservatories based on those ACT scores. So if we can have some analysis there as well, of where they stand now and how that, how they would fare trying to get into college. We didn't have any information in this report on AP class outcomes, classes or outcomes, so again, if we can include that in a, in a report. What classes are offered, how many kids participate, and what the pass rate is. And then finally, we didn't have information in this first report around Arcata Six outcomes, so they're obviously a very important part of that building, and we want to make sure they're succeeding as well, so if we could have some information there. And I was able to send this in a memo, because I know it's sometimes hard to grab all of that. So I think that will really help us have a starting point for SCPA. that, so I think that will really help us have a starting point for S C P A, where we can all be aligned on where we are now and where we want to get, to be truly one of the best in the country.
Thank you for that, Ms. Hoffman. Ms. Bates, Bolton?
I have, I think it's an assignment, just as a follow-up to this evening, that the superintendent and whomever, I guess Mr. McDoll and also Mrs. Walsh, find a way to communicate to the community regarding the search of the executive, for the executive director, so that it comes from the district and there's not any confusion.
Any other assignments? Having no other business come before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Amen.
Testing. Test, one, two, three.